It is 2:30 for our call to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, please.
I'm taking all this space.
Mr. Bev? Here. Mrs. something that's not.
Absent, yes, absent.
Mr. Hubler?
Here.
Mr. Lipsky?
Here.
Mrs. Ross is here. Mrs. Servio?
Here.
Dr. Spencer? Unknown. Five and two. Just, we usually, we do not motion at these meetings. We can decide at the end whether or not to motion. So in regards to the agenda, it is the superintendent may like to add a closed session at the end of the agenda in regards to an employee matter. We would not motion to accept the agenda or motion for any of that. So we can actually, at the end of the meeting, we will make, decide whether or not we want to motion and then decide whether or not we'd like to go into closed session. But I'd just like to bring that up first before we begin.
Thank you.
Does that work for everyone?
Sure does.
Is there any hearing of district patrons?
No ma'am, none.
Presentations? Early childhood?
Hi Terry.
Hi Terry.
Oh, there's Terry. Yay!
Yeah, he's gonna spread out.
Yeah, no room over here.
Hey Terry. Diane from our early childhood center. Just to give a little overview of our program.
Hi there.
Hi.
Do you remember, we were here last year?
Yes.
Hi, we're brand new. I'm in the childhood department. I work at Britney Center. Diane Simmons is the director at the Early Childhood Center in Harrison Township. Last year when we were here, we kind of talked a little bit about the programs that the early childhood centers offer to the community. Anything from the toddler age up to our four-year-old programs that are going off to kindergarten next year. This year, we decided to kind of let you know where we're at curriculum-wise. One of the bigger goals that our school district has been focusing on this year has been on the literacy aspect, which has been supplemented by the ISD quite a bit. So we have gotten a few documents from the ISD that I'm sure that you're familiar with, the essentials practices, which is something that is a literacy essential practice. There's ten of them for preschool. There's ten of them for K-3 and there's ten of them for 4th and 5th. And so we have really focused the last couple of years of educating our staff on what these ten essentials are, how they can be used in their classroom and how they should be doing them frequently anyway. So all of our staff have this document, which was provided by the ISD, as well as a framework, which has been very helpful for them because they don't have a chance to collaborate with the elementary schools. But they can use these two documents to not only see what they should be doing in their classrooms, but what the next steps will be when they go off to kindergarten and beyond. So that's kind of where we're working from this year. I created a poster for all of the classrooms to hang up, not only for the staff to use as a reference, but for the parents to see and it holds us a little bit more accountable. These are the things that you should be seeing working in your child's classroom every day. So they have these posted up around the building for the parents to see, be comfortable with. It gives them a reminder, hey, I haven't done that one recently today, that kind of thing. So it reminds them to do those kind of things as they go along. So some of the essential practices, we've been kind of focusing on this here. Number one is the use of artifacts and using actual real items. If you've been in preschool classrooms of the past, it was very typical for us to purchase plastic replica-type materials from catalog. Now we're trying to encourage the staff members to find actual real items to give to the kids to play with because they're more interesting, they promote more conversations, they're providing a more authentic play. So we're finding things like maps in the classroom that the kids are playing with and focusing on, you know, this is the state that I live in and I went to Florida and this is what it looks like. They've got menus from different restaurants in the area. That's a restaurant that I've been to so they can have conversations about that. Food containers. I've seen frequently them bringing in cans of green beans so they can shake it and they know that there's something in there. At some point, they can take it home and eat it for dinner or have it as a snack in class. But they're having actual things in their classroom that they're a little bit more comfortable with and things that they're more familiar with. The second thing that we focused a lot on this year is the read aloud with two emphases. The first one is an emphasis on print. One of the grants that we received, my mind was blank, what was the grant?
Thirty-five A.
The thirty-five A grant. We received the money from the grant that let us purchase multiple copies of classroom books. This one is, this looked like Spilled Milk. Spilled Milk, the one with the teacher. All of the children have a copy of that so they can read it with the teacher and pointing to the print while they're reading it so they actually have the books in their hand. We're looking for books that have bigger copies of print so that they recognize the difference between the print and the pictures on the page. And the other focus being the comprehension and vocabulary focus. So they're working on trying to engage in retelling the story, coming up with conclusions about the story. In these particular pictures, the children are retelling it for their class as a class play. The other ones, they had to make a prediction, would you like to build your three little pig house on straw or sticks or bricks? So they would go back after the story and try to decide if they made the best choice. Those kind of things are important for them and presenting for those pre-reading skills. We're working a lot with playing with the sounds inside the words as part of March's Reading Month. They were doing a lot of rhyming. A lot of Dr. Susan are building. A lot of story games and sound games that they've been playing at tables with small groups. A lot of singing and a lot of games, a lot of songs that they sing all the time, all day long. The other one that we're working a lot on at this level is letter sound instruction and focusing not just on the letter names, but the sounds as well. And understanding that different letters might have two sounds or two letters may have the same sound. So trying to figure out the differences between that. So you can see that one of our goals from the essentials pages are that the children will have eighteen uppercase letters and fifteen lowercase letters by the time they leave our four-year-old preschool program. So that's the number that the research has shown is the most reasonable for this age. This is one of the areas, the instruction around writing, that we are kind of focusing on more next year. We have a speaker coming in at the beginning of the year. We do it now, but it's a little bit, it's not as strong. I think it's an area that they feel a little uncomfortable with. The instruction kind of tends to stick around, writing their name, writing a few small words that they might recognize. We'd like for them to be doing a little bit more shared writing and coming up with stories with the kids. Obviously, they're not going to write it themselves, but we can write it with them. They do a little bit of journaling this time of the year and will write what they're saying so that they understand that print carries a meaning. So we'd really like for them to have a little bit stronger skill with that. Extended conversations is another one that we're kind of working on, particularly with the staff members that don't like to leave their classroom tables. They like to teach at a table with stuff and having them walk away and go to an area like this where the kids are playing and just sitting and talking to them, it feels like they're not doing anything. So we have to kind of remind them that that's how you're modeling to these children, how they have conversations in scaffold language, things like that. So we're working with them on increasing that. And then the last two areas are more parent goals. Ongoing assessment. This is a copy of our progress report for the end of our four-year-old program. We have conferences with them twice a year. One of them is in November at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. They're just getting ready to do their second conference right now. This gives the parents a chance to see if their children are ready to go to kindergarten with the goals that we've created, what's expected, that kind of thing. And also helps them decide for the ones that plan on signing a waiver, is that really your best choice or maybe it would be better for you to waive another year because of just not quite where you would expect a kindergartner to be. So we have those conversations with parents based on that. And finally, the last one is collaboration with families. So we provide a multiple collection of resources that we have. We give most of you through the ISD throughout the year. So we give those to parents. However we get them, we have a lot of different materials that come through and so we try to give that to them frequently when they come out. I'm so sorry. I talk really fast. Did you have any questions about anything?
How are you finding the kids are coming in prepared for what you're ready to teach them? Is it getting better?
I feel like there are certain things that they're doing, that they're doing better on. Fine motor skills are coming in far worse than they were a few years ago because they're on their electronics, I think, quite a bit more than they are playing games with, sorry, with pieces, that kind of thing. So they're really good with this. So when you put them in front of a computer and say, okay, we're going to do something on the computer or a smart board, they're automatically touching the screen like this, trying to do things and that's not going to help you. You have to use the mouse. So you have that kind of an education component that's taking a little bit more of our time.
So maybe share with the parents like before they come in, listen, let's try and move away from that for a little bit as they're getting ready to come into.
Yep, we try to use those kind of opportunities to talk to parents. We have a parent talk with their families every day after class.
Right.
So it's an opportunity for the teachers to speak to the parents specifically about areas of concern. Like today, we read this book. It goes along with these fun puppets that we were doing. Why don't you try doing this at home? And we'll call it, you know, Electronic Free Tuesday or something. Try to go home and do something without playing games on the iPads tonight. So many of them come in and say that they didn't go to bed until 10 o'clock because they were busy on their iPads playing games until they fell asleep.
Are the parents telling you that their child didn't go to bed till 10:00 PM?
No, the children.
Oh, the children telling you this?
I don't know how they know what 10 o'clock means.
Because they can't read that regular clock, so. It's a digital clock, okay. All right, good, thanks. Anyone else?
Well, you find the ISD, you're getting instructions for your staff on how to do it from, I've heard from the ISD, to do it with fidelity. Every child, every classroom, every day. The literacy is something that needs constant reinforcement, both to our students, our staff, and our parents.
Yes.
So it's great to see, I mean, because the best advocates you have are your parents.
Absolutely.
And you get that information.
One of the new things that we've started doing this year, we introduced all of these ten to them last year through a weekly email. These are some suggestions of some things that you can do in your classroom, very easy ways to change what you're doing or further what you're already doing. This year, we have, twice a year minimally, I go into every classroom in both buildings and we have a very easy-to-read evaluation that we do of their stuff that they have in their classroom, of how they're doing your read aloud. And it comes right out of the book. It's just a copy of the page and it says, okay, these are the things that I'm noticing. Now you can take that and decide what you maybe still need to work on. Or maybe I just didn't notice it this time, but you did it yesterday. So it's a little bit more of an accountability piece. If I'm in there at least twice, Diane goes into her own classroom more times than that and I go into my own classrooms more than that. But at least everybody has been evaluating a couple of times throughout the year.
I hope there's a way to evaluate how well it's working.
I hope so too.
You know, and that's right. You know, everybody's got great ideas. It sounds like a really good plan, I mean, but you want to, you want to see that it's actually, that the results are there for the effort.
I hope so too. You know, we really put a push on it this year. We had a lot of guest readers that came in from March to read in our buildings and that was great. We put the videos right up online and I got so much feedback from the parents and the students saying, I saw my class online and we watched it before I went to bed. So it was like my teacher read me a story before I went to bed. That's great, that's what we were going to aim for, so. Went really well with that. We're just gonna hope the momentum stays.
How do you evaluate at the end that children are, that you succeeded in your learning process?
Well, we have the progress report that we're kind of looking at as our first tool. We kind of know where they were at at the beginning of the year and so we'll go back and look at that and hopefully when we look at the data from where they were at last year, how they're doing, we talk to the kindergarten teachers and try to get an idea from that direction, how the students seem prepared. It's hard because we don't have hard data for all of them. Some of our students have an online assessment that they do for the three-step readiness program, but that's not a tool that we use for our students.
Any other questions?
I just have one. Who won the door contest?
Tacos.
I read that book. I read it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's so fun to go through those, isn't it? Okay, so that's zero. Okay, so a minute. One, two, three, four. Do you need to reset it?
Oh, more than that.
Does it blow up?
It's been dropped on its head, I think.
What?
It's flashing all sorts of weird stuff on the side. Like that's why I kept looking at it.
It's flashing on the side?
Well, like, no, fading out on us.
Yeah. What does that look like to you? Forty-eight.
Oh, forty-eight, eighty-eight?
Yeah. It's ten. What? You didn't get that? No. Does it ever need batteries? I don't know.
We're gonna further create confusion through translation. Forty-eight, eighty-eight equals ten.
New mail. Great. Come, Cor. It does seem like maybe it is the battery. If it's fading in the... Oh, okay. I'll stay here. You got that magic touch, girl. Magic touch. Look at her.
Oh, here we go.
Hello. It's a pate.
So we have from both of our high schools. I'm sorry. We had just a few weeks ago, charity week at both High School and High School North and both of them had huge success. So we thought it would be wonderful to bring them in and talk a little bit about the inspiration and their process, how they raised their money. So we have two different groups, two different PowerPoints. We're trying to do our best to stay within that ten, twelve minutes.
Yes.
And we're going to start with Melissa Chase from the high school. Go ahead.
Yes. So I'm super excited. When Mr. Hassel came to me with the idea and I can say now that it's happened that as a former student at the high school, teacher and now a listening role, this has been one of the most exciting and just one of those proud moments that I have had in any of those roles. So I will let the student council people tell you all about how that started.
So last year, we went to our Leadership State Conference in Grand Rapids where all the high schools from the state are there. And they, the biggest feedback we got back from the kids, we want to have charity week. We want to have charity week like all these other schools. And we were like, okay. So when the school year started, we started organizing, figuring it out and a lot of the students have, are on NHS. So Mr. Styes was the NHS advisor last year. They found out he was sick and so obviously they wanted to raise money for him. So we figured out the research, how we could go about it, what we could do. And then also our state conference, the state charity is Leader Dogs for the Blind. So we decided to split it between the two as well as we could and that's how we decided to go with who we wanted to raise the money for.
And I love charts. Just broke down our money, how it was distributed and how it came in. And the thing that stood out to me here was the thing that brought in the most money was activities that the teachers came up with in their classrooms. And one of the activities that stood out was Mr. LaRose did this thing where it was called Taboo, where the teacher came up with a word or set of words and anytime he said it, he had to put money into a bucket. And his students were learning pronouns and so he wanted to test their knowledge. And so he told them anytime he said a pronoun in class, if they could raise their hand and correctly identify it as a pronoun, he would put the money in. And so teachers just got really creative about how to do it. I just thought it builds a ton of rapport with the students to have those little moments with them.
I like that.
We kicked off charity week with a boys' volleyball tournament. That was a huge success. And then we did an ice skating event. And the thing that stood out to me at the ice skating event was just how all the different groups of students were mingling together. We saw the students who had won the volleyball contest the night before, two of them were out there with the carts learning how to ice skate. And so it was just one of those events where, you know, people you would typically see as like the athletes, they were out there, you know, with the carts trying to figure out ice skating together. So that was just a cool way. It's a special event in memory for them, but at the same time, they were helping people.
So then some of our week-long activities, we had the staff send us pictures of their pet and we had the cutest pet contest. So every day during your lunch, you could put money in the jar that you thought was the cutest pet. And we collected the money every day, counted it out. So we announced at the end of the day whose pets were in the lead. And so it was a big competition. And out of all our pets, I think we had forty pets entered in our cutest pet contest. So that was a big success. The kids, you know, picked out their cutest ones and the teachers, we have one teacher collected money or one of our fundraisers at E-Dom's one night. So that was a big success, our cutest pet. And we also did on pie day. This happened during charity week. We had a couple of staff members volunteer to be pie. On pie day, you bought a raffle ticket for a dollar and you got picked to pie a staff member during lunch. So that was a success. And then on Friday, we had Sarge's famous French toast breakfast. The students paid five dollars and we had staff members cooking. We delivered to the table hot off the grill and in the first two hours of the day, we fed about two-hundred-and-eight students hot off the grill, French toast, sausage and juice. So that was a success and we just got to figure out, you know, we were running to the store for more bread. We'll have it worked out next year. We come to a list of how many we fed and everything.
This is our cutest pet. The students were really excited about. But one of the things that we focused at the assembly is we told the students, this is an assembly, not a pet assembly. And our pet assembly oftentimes, it's different grades competing against each other. And our goal for this was what can we do when we cooperate together? And so our big message to the students was cooperation instead of competition. And so it was different for the students to have that kind of assembly and rather than have them sit by class, by grade, we had them just come down with their teachers and fill in that way. So it definitely created a different feel. Even the games that we played, it was everyone cheering on for like a half-court shot as opposed to a grade, first grade competition. And actually, three kids made half-court shots. So I was kind of like, maybe one will make it. And then three did. So some talented basketball shooters. And then, you know, I have to give credit to the student council. In the midst of planning all of these events, they also designed a flash mob dance that they did in the middle of the assembly for everyone. And it was just awesome to see all of the student council kids, all the different grades out there. And I'm sure for some of them, it was way out of their comfort zone, but they were willing to do it and the students loved it. And then this is just a picture at the end after we had revealed our amount. So our goal initially was just one dollar per kid. What if every kid in the building don't even want a dollar? So it was one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Ninety-seven, that was the sub to two. And we ended up reaching over seven thousand. And so the students, when we showed the number, you could just hear the amazement and excitement in their voices. And we got to communicate to them that they can look back and think, I started that trip. And so it's just something neat for them to look back on. I know we're short on time, so I'll just make a segment to you guys. But we also at the assembly showed a video from Mr. Styes that he had sent. It was incredibly touching. The gym was silent. It was silent and even when the sound wouldn't work at the beginning, I was like, it's gonna happen. They just stayed silent and they did such a good job. And it was just awesome. And one of his messages was how touched he was by the spirit of generosity, even though he had only been a teacher there one year. And he said, you know, so many of these people probably never had me as a teacher, don't know who I am. And it gave us an opportunity then to share with our students, whether you've been here for four years and you're kind of on your way out or you're a freshman who's just getting here. When you're here, you're needed and part of this Lancer family. And so I thought it was just a great way for us to really get to connect and envision our students about the kind of community they're trying to build at this school.
Fabulous. And then I'll switch over to the other side of the district here. Rosa from High School North.
Thank you again. Hello, I'm Rosa Huff. I'm a social service teacher and student council advisor. We got this started, this is our second year of doing charity week. And actually, Dr. Dixon's wife actually came over two years ago in May with some student council members and the student council advisor from Troy Athens. Right, Athens? Correct, I want to make sure it's the right one. And they came over and they actually gave us a guinea pig, not a guinea, like a breakdown calendar. calendar, here's where you can start with. And so our first year, we didn't know, we were kind of like the other high schools, we're so excited, we're doing it, we set a low goal and we did it in honor of Ms. Cozen who had passed away. And then this year, we decided to set a goal for ten thousand dollars because the year before, we had raised just over eight thousand dollars our first year. So our second year, we were ready and more improved and ready to go. So, um, who do I hit? I'm sorry. Okay, all right. So we had a variety of events going on that week. We kicked it off with a dance just for LCN students and we did an informal dance and the kids were, were a little excited just to be able to dress up in neon colors and glow and, you know, they had necklaces, everything was crazy. And then on Sunday, we did a yoga. We were trying to appeal to a wide variety of students this year. We had our second year doing the coffee house and NHS graciously ran that for us this year. We did ice skating again and that is, like Melissa said, it was really neat to see it appealed to groups of kids I haven't seen at other events. So it was really nice to see that. And we did a pancake breakfast and the power buff and I'm gonna talk about the teacher stall in a moment because this was, like Melissa said, the teachers this year brought. Like we had more teacher involvement than we had the year before and you could feel the excitement building amongst the staff and the students from having more teacher involvement. So again, these were just some of the events we did. We had restaurants and the boys' power buff and ice skating and all these and we plan on keeping some of these as the year goes on, but we also want to come up with new ideas so we can keep building the excitement year after year. But again, so the dance was nice, this was a big one for us. We raised over four thousand dollars just for having a dance. We charged fifteen dollars per student. We told them, you know, this is going to charity. We did provide them beverages and concessions and stuff that day, but we really wanted to say to them, this is being donated. And I do want to give a shout out to Tony Gonzalez, I don't know if you, he helped us out so much. He only charged us four hundred dollars to DJ. He went out and bought extra lights and he donated a blow up photo light booth for us to be able to, because it was the smaller number of students attending, he really wanted us to make sure we made money off of the event. So Tony Gonzalez was a huge shout out to that day. Like the other high school, this was our second year doing the Pet Wars and it really does bring the competition. We didn't have as many, we had about twenty-five and they could, they could give money during lunches, but the teachers could also have the jars in their room. And what really helped is our district allowed, before it kicked off, our building allowed some of the pets to come in on that Friday half day to be graded around the pet assembly. And it was like, the kids were like, there's, there's pets in the building and they were so excited for that. And then at the reveal, the real, reveal assembly, the winner got to bring her pet in and he was cute, thirteen-year-old choc, or thirteen-year-old lab, he was very adorable. So, so this was, we raised over four thousand for our second year and last year, this was our big one too with over twenty-nine hundred the year prior. This was the new one. So the coin stalls and teacher incentives, we didn't really know what to plan on, but basically, we said to the teachers, hey, here's what you do, you can set some rules, but basically for the money brought in, it stalls the start of class. Or some teachers used, some teachers used, for example, okay, for the time it takes me, maybe you can use a little note card on your test you're taking. So there still was learning going on this day.
Thank you Rosa.
If we have forty teachers participate, I don't know if the teachers, if I were to ask them again this school year to do it, I don't know if they'd want, because some of them were counting well into the next hour, the amount of coins the kids brought in. So basically, there were incentives we sold, you had to count the quarters by the year, you had to sort the change. There was even a sabotage of you could restart, so your teacher could almost be done, you could go up with this little card and force them to restart counting. And so that one really brought almost four thousand dollars for the first year. And Jason Hubbard was telling us that his daughter goes to Stony Creek and they raised over ten thousand, they've been doing this. So I have a feeling next year, if we bring this again, this is, you know, we're gonna keep bringing that. The other thing we added were teacher incentives and the teachers said, hey, for every amount of money, I'll do this, like Terry very dressed up as a grandma, you know, on one day. Lisa McCumber got an egg smashed on her head for every thousand dollar raise. Kyle Hagel got slimed at the pet assembly. And, you know, it kept going on. Oh, Mr. Ekdahl and Mr. Osechuk shaved their beards if we reached over a thousand. Ms. Cody got duct taped to a wall. So what happened that helped us, this was the one thing we learned from one from first year to second year, is as you're, as the week's going on, you keep hyping it up to the kids. So we were like, all right, we've reached our goal of two thousand, that means Cody's being taped to the wall, all right, we've reached. We stopped after Wednesday because we wanted to keep the hype for Friday, but they were so excited. They knew after Wednesday that we were already at eight thousand and we were only trying to reach ten thousand originally. So they knew they were being shaved, their beards were being shaved. So it really helped. And so again, at the reveal, and I really liked what you guys said, so I might be tweaking our assembly a little bit for next year because I really did like that, but basically, it helped build the excitement because the kids this year knew, they didn't know what the full amount was, but they were pretty sure, we've reached the ten thousand amount. So when we did the big reveal, we ended up raising eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. On top of, we had already had a previous event in January held a Mr. Crusader for Leader Dogs for the Blind and we raised two thousand at that event. So actually, Leader Dogs for the Blind raised, we raised over twenty thousand dollars for them from our school. And at our state charity, our state awards that we went to, we actually received honorable mention for having the second most amount of money raised to Leader Dogs for the Blind, Lons Cruz High School North did. So we were pretty proud of ourselves for this being our second year. But immediately, my first thought was, oh my gosh, what are we gonna have to raise next year? Like, you know, when I was seeing this eighteen thousand when we only said ten. So definitely, and I did include for you at, once I later, but yes, again, this is just saying what we raised. And in here, at some point, if you do want to have some spare time, but I know you all are very busy, we did, this year helped too, more social media. We made a Spirit Week promotional video, we made the Pet Wars promotional video that had all the pets on there. We made a teacher sentence, a promotional video and the coin stalls that explained the rules. So this really helped, social media wise, also getting the kids way more excited about it. So I'm looking forward to it. This was only our second year. One day, Dr. Dixon will get to your wife's status, maybe down the road, you know, they raised a lot at Troy Athens.
The sponsor there did it for his twentieth year and figured twenty years, I'm done. And when they realize they're only twenty thousand dollars away from having raised one million dollars, I'll do it one more year. I wanted to say I raised a million dollars for Spirit Week.
I just think it's great that both high schools are doing this, it's giving back, it's telling the kids, you know, just the importance of giving back to society and I'm excited to see where this keeps going. So thank you for letting us.
Thanks, y'all. Nice job.
Any questions from the board?
No, but you guys were wonderful.
Thanks for your enthusiasm.
It's a great model for, yes.
Well, and next year, I did, Edom and Dixon did go to our assembly and next year, I'm gonna try to get them some central office.
I think I just heard Eric volunteer to be taped to the wall.
Can it be if you raised a thousand dollars, you take my cell phone away from me?
Seriously, four minutes, one hundred and eighty eggs smashed over her head, I felt so bad for her.
That went on and on and on. But your number last year is very similar to your number this year, so you can see how it builds the same way, right?
Yes, we were very excited to hear that one, the other high school was doing theirs as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
And now we have, Aspen got my vote though. Dog at high school, Aspen. Hi Ian.
Hello, hello.
So we have Shelly Albert, Rebecca Philick and Nicole Leitz from Curriculum and they are just going to give you a brief overview of a grant, a new grant that came out last year that we applied for that we actually got this year.
Remember your ladies are ready. Okay, great. So we're so excited to be here with you today to explain the grant that we were awarded. We're very excited about this opportunity. So Michigan MySTEM Advisory Council started back in 2015 and it consists of different businesses, higher education, different leaders across the state. And they're really working on recommendations that will help make Michigan a world leader in STEM and that's part of the top ten and ten initiatives with MDE. So their mission is really to have those K-12 students have access and exposure to outstanding STEM programs. One of the programs that they defined as an outstanding STEM program is Math Recovery. In our district, a few years ago, Nicole and myself, along with some teachers in different elementary schools, started learning about Math Recovery and the impact it has made on student achievement, we have found so far to be very high. And with that being said, last year, MySTEM, we tried to get a grant through MySTEM. It's a very competitive grant and unfortunately, last year, we did not receive the grant. So this year, we tried again and there were seventy-eight different applicants, but twenty-one were awarded and we're proud to say that Lons Cruz was one of those. So there was over eleven million dollars were asked for the grants with those seventy-eight applications, but about three million dollars was awarded and we received a nice chunk of it. And we're very excited about that opportunity for our teachers and for the students, of course, here in our district. So with that being said, what's going to happen is that we are going to be training twenty-five different teachers. We're gonna be working very closely with a math consultant at ISD and that person will be doing the training. Specifically, they'll be going to what is called Advantage Math Recovery and that is classroom training to understand what Math Recovery is rather than individual one-on-one training. So classroom teachers will receive the training and they'll learn what they can do with their students in the classroom. So they're gonna go to training as well as administrators to administrators within this grant. There will be after-school and summer training opportunities for the teachers to continue their learning. So they're gonna have that initial training and then Nicole and I are gonna support them through that after-school training to sustain their learning. We will, in the grant, it was built in to have different materials and resources that they'll be needing to have in their classrooms. There will be family engagement nights, of course, during the whole time, we'll have lots of data collection to analyze the results of the grant. Instructional pair of pros will be receiving some training from Nicole and I as we've been going through this program ourselves. And as I mentioned before, we have a close partnership with the McComb ISD consultants. So that's just of what the grant will provide.
So what is Math Recovery? Math Recovery is a robust teaching and learning framework that helps us learn the construction of numeracy skills so as students starting in age kindergarten and as they go through their schooling, how their numeracy skills are developed. Math Recovery has assessments that allow us to really diagnose where holes are for students and where to help meet their individual needs. And then there are two professional development courses currently available through the ISD and that is an interventional specialist course that Rebecca and I are currently taking and also this add plus advantage, which we call AVMR, which is, the MR stands for Math Recovery. And this is the course that the teachers will be taking through the grant. So as a result of this Math Recovery training, we have found and we are expecting that teachers will be able to listen to the way that students solve math problems, they'll have a better understanding of that. They'll also be able to pinpoint student strengths and weaknesses. They'll be able to purposely select some tasks and activities that specific, that meet specific needs of students. They'll be able to challenge students and they'll also be more critical consumers of current resources that they have available, which is great for them to be able to use that information to what they're currently teaching. And then they'll be able to sharpen their ability to move students to the next level and provide these assessments, as I said, to plan their tasks in the classroom as well. So that would be on a full group, small group and individual. So since we've had several teachers in the district that have gone through this training, we've seen a really positive impact. These are some testimonials specific from some teachers that have gone through it. And just to kind of summarize that, many of them feel that they just know now what it means to actually understand math instead of just memorizing a procedure. They're able to explain concepts to their students in different ways than they have before. They're able to use the assessments to help individual needs. A special education teacher also feels that they finally have a program that helps continue to move their students along as well and as well as the general ed students as well. So we're finding this really has impacted just general instruction when the teacher presents materials as well as when we need to provide intervention for students as well.
Is that all? All right, is there any questions from the board?
Well, so it's fifty-some thousand dollars in the range and so you've had teachers that have gone through some additional training. This is a one-year grant, correct?
Yes.
All right, so is there impact that you see next year from, I mean, are there trained trainers or is there, how does it move from here?
We were a part of a ISD grant a couple of years ago, that's how we got our first group of teachers through. And then we applied for this because we can see the impact of there. And then also, some of the teacher, or some of the administrators have put that in their Title I plans to continue training. So many buildings like Tenniswood and Yak's have every single teacher trained. So as a new teacher comes in, they put that in their plan to get that new teacher trained as well. So, and then we're moving on to other buildings that are not trained.
So you might reapply? Is there, is this a best, Michigan, is this, yeah, what's the likelihood to see additional grants from it?
I believe they're gonna probably have it every year.
Right, so Math Recovery being one of the programs that were on the approved list had the highest amount of applicants received their grant. So this is definitely something in the state that they've seen positive impact with, especially on the west side of the state. And the ISD consultant that we've been working with has really been trying to train teachers here. So we're hoping that it continues. We know that person also wrote for the grant though this year and didn't receive it, so we were so excited that he did receive it though. So, but we are continuing that. Nicole and I have also taken additional courses in it so that we are there as coaches to work with teachers and help sustain their learning as they're continuing through that.
It's definitely not something that ends after your term. We're gonna continue to have more professional development along the way and support teachers. We're in our role to do that.
Yeah, that's quite a statement when a teacher says, I understand what math is, what math learning is, not just.
Yeah, a couple of the teachers that have gone through the training, we have several districts asking us to watch their, or to visit their school and watch the instruction that they're, our data's being shared commie-wise. Pretty exciting. We'll be closing that gap.
Which grades do you find yourself focusing primarily on? Is this K, is this full K through twelve?
It's a K-five program. There are some situations where middle school takes that, that there, we might have a few resource from teachers from the middle school attending as well, or support, and support teachers that can benefit from that. And the whole board con is using that with some middle school support classes. So what, mainly K-five and the earlier the intervention, the better. So we're first targeting first through third grade with this grant and then as we can go into the other grade levels, it's kind of, we'll help the rest of them.
Any other questions from the board? Come in. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, would we like to take a short break or would we like to keep moving along?
A short break.
All right, we can go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
At least we're there, right? Let's get back to it. We are at D Superintendent.
Thank you. Per goals, and it was actually my interest to do this anyway for certain positions. I have in front of you attached the employee description of supervisor for technology, which is something we're interested in posting soon. Not, you know, it's not an imminent thing. I think I discussed with you a timeline of late spring when we first talked about this a couple of months ago. You have on there, I have looked at this, this is not, how do I say this? This is not intended to be, okay, I'm done with every word in this now, board, what recommendations do you have? There's been some, I think, some reflections of demands of, you know, the modern, I guess the modern skills needed to do this job. Some of the higher-end IT skills that are more global are embedded within this job description beyond what it means to repair a computer in a classroom or things like that because we are so centralized in terms of network and our fiber and other things like that. So it's a broad-based description. It is likely to, something I would recommend to report to me going forward, that was not the case in the past, it was a report to a variety of different people, it's changed over time. There's been times when this position reported to the business office because it was thought of as a, sort of a quasi-business function. It reported the curriculum office because it is, obviously instructional technology is the main usage we want out of our technology, but it's certainly not the only thing. There's all of our passive and background technology is not necessarily about teaching and learning, but it's, we're totally dependent on it every day as well. So I think this is something that would likely report to myself going forward and other than that, we have some recommendations for skill sets up through eight numbers, eighteen. They obviously have a supervisory responsibility over their staff. The qualifications are listed as prefer, as, number one is not listed as preferred, which is bachelor's degree or equivalent preferred, preferably in IT and education-related field, but then there's some other listings of preferred qualifications we thought would provide a pool of candidates that would be stronger to, you know, be worthy of interview to lead the department. And then the, just so everyone knows, the certificates, license and registrations, those are in for a variety of our jobs. So those are things that physical demands and work environment are ADA requirement pieces that have to go on at the end as far as workload and work environment and our requirement to accommodate if there's a need to do that. So I'll open it up to questions or comments. I would, the timeline is not predetermined on this, but it would be nice to get this going in May so we can have someone in place to begin our school year, which is basically July first. So please, go ahead.
The first one, degree, bachelor's degree or equivalent? What's the equivalent until bachelor's degree?
Well, this, this didn't change, I didn't change this line, just so you know. This would be, an equivalent would be someone who comes in, has been running the IT department that came through an organization, a company or something like that and has, is running a network and is doing all the types of things that would come out of this, but has a lot of relevant experience running a department like this.
So that equivalent is not per se, if they, if there was a CTE program that gave them a benefit in regards to IT?
No, I would, right.
To me, an equivalent, a bachelor's degree is educational based. So, or equivalent, to me, would have to be something educationally based.
I suppose. Okay, that's good.
Like maybe Lawrence Tech doesn't necessarily issue a bachelor's, but might issue a...
Or someone has two associate's degrees or something like that.
Yeah, associate's degree. And also, preferred IT or, I mean, their degree should be in IT. You can't have somebody who has a culinary arts degree from some culinary arts college, but they're gonna do our IT, that's, no.
Well, let me, let me play devil's advocate.
Hold on, Adam, before you go though, Sharon.
I agree with, with this bachelor's or maybe two associates or some other whatever thing, but I do not want us to necessarily rule out someone who's got every other piece that we're requiring and would logically be required for an IT position such as this. But I want to say, if we've got someone with a lot of work experience and they're already doing like, maybe the head of something, I don't want us to say, oh, you can't do it because you don't have that bachelor's. If you've got some, some education, you've got maybe those two associates or you've got whatever, but I, I don't want us to ever just say, we cannot ever entertain the idea of interviewing someone who's got a boatload of this experience under their belt. I know that we had some talks in the past about making sure we had degrees, but I do not want us to be in the position where we say, oh, twenty years doesn't count because you don't have a bachelor's. There's gotta be a place where we can have like a meeting of minds or discussion so we can say, all right, this is gonna work or this is not gonna work. But that should be like, I just don't want it to be, if you don't have any kind of, you know, something after your name, you can't come in here and work for us. If you've proven that you've done this in a setting, that would be, you know, amenable to what we need, we need to be able to at least have a discussion about that.
I think you just defined what equivalent means, right? And when you say preferably in IT, if, a lot of this particular position from a managerial perspective is managing budget from a finance perspective. So if they have a business management degree, but they've been in IT for fifteen, twenty years running an IT department, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, if they had a business degree. If it was like a business degree, we... If it was like a business degree with an IT background, I could see.
So, here's another example though that could be someone who has qualifications for this, I'm inventing this. Someone who was a teacher for fifteen years and then went into an IT department and has a couple of different jobs in the IT department in their district too, so they came through education.
So, I, I think there's one thing missing on this and it's preferred, preferred qualifications. And we have a whole infrastructure and backbone that it frankly not stayed in here, right? So, there's no endpoints in here, so are we, are we HP, are we Cisco from a wireless perspective? I mean, should we be putting, you know, you'd have some, not need, but again, the preferred requirements.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, knowledge around, because if we, we come in with somebody who doesn't have that particular background in technology, now are they gonna come in and wanna rip out entirely the wireless infrastructure because they like Aruba over Cisco?
Well, they're not getting money to do it, but you're right.
That's my point. But they're gonna come here and argue for it, so.
Well, but in somebody who's knowledgeable. If, if you have two applicants and one's more knowledgeable, that could tip it over the other.
And even from a data center perspective, right, are we HP? Right, so.
Cisco and HP.
Right, so from a networking perspective, right, from a data center, I think we're HP, right, from networking, assuming we're Cisco. So, having some of those qualifications, what are we from a networking perspective then?
Extreme.
Okay, so, is, well, that, that one's more niche, but still, having that's one, some sort of, and just putting them as preferred, not necessarily.
Knowledge with blah, 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 blah.
Like preferred.
Right.
Qualifications, that's it, just preferred. Because again, to your point, I don't think we're gonna discount anybody, but if you have those qualifications, then I think that helps in regards to what you're saying, if they have twenty years and no bachelor's degree, but they, geez, they really check off all these boxes from what we already have from an infrastructure perspective.
So if we, if, on one, if you, if it's bachelor's degree or equivalent, prefer, preferably in IT or business-related field? No, Terry?
Terry, yeah, Terry has some coming up. I would say, you know, and this is what I spent a, a large portion of my career in as director of technology, but, and I just attended the McCall conference, but there are two types of people. They came up through the track either as an educator or they might've had some sort of degree in computer science or whatever, and they came up in that way. But I would have to say the most successful, at least in my view, are those that understand education and what schools are. And the most important thing is working with the principals and teachers so that you can effectively integrate technology into the classroom to improve student learning. Okay, so if you have no education background whatsoever, that's very difficult to do. Those people are typically focused, mono-focused on the speed of our network, the this, the this, the this. And not that that should not be discounted, but what is the meat and potatoes? Are we using technology or peripheral devices effectively in integrating it so that teachers and students have access, so that you actually are improving student learning? So, there's the management side of technology, okay? And then there's the educational side. That's why some are educational technology and some is management. So, I don't think that the focus on the bachelor's degree, because most people, let's just say they get their bachelor's degree in education in some related field, then the next step for somebody leading educational technology in our state is usually a master's degree in educational technology or instructional technology, some of those. And that's where the person scaffolds, okay, I, I have the foundation of school and then now I have my master's degree on how to, to integrate technology into the curriculum. So, as much as I respect and I think it's wonderful that there are some very talented leaders in terms of IT, and I don't think that they should be discounted because you don't know, people have a plethora of, of different backgrounds and experience. But, I really feel, just as our superintendent, I, I think ideally should have an education background versus some districts that are picking up people that, whatever. I, I was the CEO of potato chip company.
But you need somebody.
Let's, let's finish and then, I have a comment.
I just think that it's important for the person to have education experience at some point.
So, how many people work in the IT department?
Oh, you're catching me now, one, two.
More than one.
Eight?
Okay, more than one. So, the director, or not, I'm sorry, this is not a director, this is a supervisor. So the supervisor could be an individual who is strong in IT, strong in business, strong in management. And then in that department, you could have somebody who is complete, their sole responsibility is exactly what you mentioned, about facilitating technology into classrooms. And then you could have another individual who may be strong in the management aspect of it. But the supervisor should be the one overseeing this whole department, execute all of these different components and these different aspects.
Well, is there gonna be a director? Is there somebody? No, it's, it's.
Can I comment on that, can I comment on current needs? And that's, that, one of the problems with this job, I believe, is because we're having a conversation about what this job could be from a variety of different perspectives, okay? So, and it's all true, every single thing that someone has said are, those are all tech directors right now.
Right.
Tech supervisors, tech directors, I mean, managers, I don't know, you know, they kept the, the title before. But the lead of a technology department in a school district can look like many different things. It's probably more varied than almost any other position in a school district. We have our current, I think a reality that we're facing right now with this particular job going forward is we, first of all, the instructional technology side is a very important piece of it. We have pieces of that in the curriculum department. They're not even in technology, but they're, we're in the curriculum department. But we've done a lot of good work recently with collaborating between technology and curriculum with some people that are in this room right now, and there's another individual as well who are working on the instructional side of it. And I think if ever there was to be a purchase going forward, a substantial purchase or reinvestment, that would be a critical piece to make good determinations as to what gets in kids' hands, teachers' hands, things like that. However, right now we're faced with our main manager of our server and our entire infrastructure, which is very robust and very critical to our existence here, is going to be leaving us at the end of this year. He has worked on a contract position for a number of years here and worked really in a way that was, he knew what he was doing and it was okay that he knew it because he, no one else needed to know it. So, that is a job that we need that work to be replaced. And I think there's some things within this that are reflected in the skills that he had as well. So that, I think a tech, a tech supervisor, director, manager has a subset beyond good managerial skills, either in education, in business, or in IT. I think all three of those things, and you tend to see one of those things come out when you look at a variety of districts, that's all I'll say.
Well, and when it, when it comes to the subset, I think that that's different than the core of what we're looking at. And for whomever the top dog is in our technology department, whether it be a director, supervisor, or whomever, I do think that for the robust nature of our network, we, they should be, hold a degree of some sort.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, that's my, my opinion is that they do need to hold a degree of some sort. Just because of, and it's very difficult too because of our size. You have to remember our size too, that that's a, that's a component that comes in with how many buildings we're servicing. So that, that individual, I think, needs to be, have all of those skills. So then Don and then Amy.
When you look at essential duties and responsibilities when you look at nine, ten, eleven, much of that has to do with education, coordinating staff, curriculum and stuff. But then when you look at, at our qualifications, there's been discussion on experienced, you know, department educational setting preferred. There's, we're not unique. What we're looking for is, is probably in our, under high demand. We're a large enough district, we have the infrastructure that require, I mean, it really operate it and to coordinate it properly. You need somebody pretty high functioning. I don't, you know, Adam's worked in this field and, and, you know, we, we know that technology is, is kind of a marketable skill that, that is pretty broad now. But when it comes down to the educational side of it, I, I certainly hope that we identify somebody and that, you know, there's groups like STEDA, State Education and Technology Association, Directors Association, that, I mean, we, when I, when I read this, I was wondering whether we referenced other groups that have looked for this position. Again, we're not, we're not, you know, a two-thousand student district with, you know, bare infrastructure. We, we've invested a significant amount of resource. And the potential for the most benefit is to utilize that technology well. I mean, that's one of those things that, that we have the infrastructure there. If we use that well, that's gonna give, give us a lot of opportunity. So, I, I, I just, for me, when I read this, I, I wanna be sure, and I understand, and I worry a little bit to say, we want, if you bought it from the best technology person that knew the right language, what we're using, would that really give us the best future for where this district can go with it? Because we are, we are at educational, I mean, we're a business and we're in edu, you know, but our main core of our business is education. So, I hear what you're saying, we could find somebody with those skills, but I certainly think that this is a position that could be, should have some experience and, and really have some capability to, to help us, you know, plan for the future, not to serve us, you know, in what we're doing.
So you're asking for educational experience?
Yeah, that's, that's where, thanks, that was my long way of going around it.
How many of those people are out there? Mike? For eighty K, I'm not so sure.
Well, that's, that's, that's exactly my point too.
Eric's gonna comment and then we're TV's.
So what do other departments look like? There are some departments where the head of the department spends a lot of their, knows nothing about how the network works, knows nothing about how the server works, and they spend a lot of their time planning professional development with teachers, working on how to work, integrate instructional technology. There are other departments where the person is not having an education background. There are other people that do the instructional technology and coordination with this person, but they are the high-end, high-skilled, understand the network, understand the servers, understand the infrastructure and how to do, how to perform maintenance, make it improve, reflect on what curriculum's saying to respond to those needs. That's another type of a person. They are totally different credentialed people from their backgrounds and both, and their day, it might both be called the supervisor of technology in District A and in District B, and their days are completely different. But, both of those roles exist in a potential other position in functional technology departments. If it's not that person, it's something else. If this, if the education person's this person, there's someone else doing this job. And if the education person's here, then there's someone else doing this job. So I think it's tough to say, how it's tiered would be incredibly variant in different districts. The need for both of those sets of skills is critical. I'm only projecting what our current needs are. We have a lot of strength in instructional technology right now. Laura, Greg, and Lisa have spent a lot of time working with technology. We really got back into that business in the last twelve months or so that was really not a good connection for a while. So I feel good about that is in place, no matter who it is, is taking the other piece of this job.
Amy?
So.
I, I still think that somebody should have some business background in order to budget and use the money we give them wisely. Not just, oh, well, we need new computers instead of evaluating computers and maybe it's just changing the, the, the speed of the computers and, and minor things instead of just throw it all away and just buy new. We don't want that. We want somebody who can really think about the money. Because we don't have a lot, I mean.
Strategic.
And I would like to see somebody that could use the money.
True.
A comment to you, Adam, about your, where do you find these? There's all kinds of people that are graduating with a degree in educational technology from Eastern, from Michigan Tech, or from U of M and from Michigan State. And maybe what we do is we make sure that this posting goes to those because those are people that have, that's really what the, the nature of the degree is.
But right now in the next lines, there's a minimum of eight to ten years experience.
Yeah, leadership too.
And then the second thing that I wanted to point out is, honestly, as far as this job description and what this organization needs, I don't think that there's anyone better equipped to know what the district needs than our superintendent. And so with that being said, I think we should put a posting out there, something that has a general, like you said, the person should have a degree, I think we could probably all agree on that.
That sounds like that's definitely.
And, and let's put out a posting so that they can try and get it out there to all different kinds. I think that there's some phenomenal people that have IT degrees that ended up, you know, being very successful in their job. But I don't want to hamstring or constrict finding the best candidate. And I really do believe that Eric and his team will find us the best candidate. If we start putting it has to have this, it has to have this, even the Michigan Department of Education has criteria, but then they have alternative ways that you can get a degree. And to your point about the budget, why would this person, this leader, be different than every one of our principals, every one of our program directors? Okay, should everybody have a business degree?
No, but they don't have business degrees.
Okay, so.
So, great point. But you mentioned handcuffing, right?
Yeah.
Eighty K, we already handcuffed it.
And that, I'm glad you brought that up.
We're gonna, we're gonna get what we paid for here. I mean, we are, this is under significantly.
Adam, I told, thank you for bringing that up because if you tried to get an IT person with a business background to do this, eighty grand is not gonna cut it. But you could, there's plenty of people that are highly skilled in the educational technology or instructional technology and A would be, probably there would be a lot of people.
But that's the top end. And, and if we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna perhaps take somebody who's out of college or only two years out of college, we have to lose this eight to ten.
We already want eight to ten years minimum, so that's on the other page. So I think that this, this aspect of the conversation is great for the workshop when we start talking about budget. So when we start talking about budget and we look at that, that line item and we look at that salary and we choose whether or not we want to increase it or decrease it, we need to then, of course, being the board and fiscally responsible, where are we gonna get the rest, where are we gonna get that money from?
Right.
Where are we gonna cut to increase this? You know what I mean? So that's a great conversation for budget. Don?
What does the point six-five index mean?
So all of the jobs, in order to, in a non-affiliated position, in order to try to create some sort of consistency with what jobs are paid based on titles, they were, they were at one time indexed off of the maximum of a high school principal. It's indexed off the maximum high school principal, the very top of a high school principal, correct, Mike? And that, and that, that's just the structure that was created for all non-affiliate positions. And I will tell you, and just so you know for information, in our, I, I really think the titles of manager, supervisor, and director, perhaps it's just that we have created those titles to create salaries in our employee, we changed the name of this too, but it's the employee handbook online, it's on the transparency report so you can see what a variety of non-affiliated people make. And the director, we call a director job pays one oh-five to one seventeen. So if calling this job a director, Adam would put it in a, in a category, that's an index at point nine four, just so you know for your information.
So, but let's go back to where this originally generated from. This came from a goal. And the goal was for us to be able to see what the requirements were for jobs being posted. So in my opinion, and, and please share, that this is, this would be great for a supervisor. If we were to change this to a director's position, we would need to change the description and what we're looking for for a director of technology versus a supervisor of technology. And then also in regards to the comment of handcuffing, I thought more so, the board would be able to interject, inject its opinion on the, what we, the requirement and the posting to allow freedom to HR and the super, superintendent to be able to fill the position based upon what the board wanted. And then we wouldn't be handcuffing them because they have the freedom for the parameters that we gave them, kind of thing.
Well, I was with you all the way to that last part, what the board wanted.
Well, and I think that this position specifically has generated a lot of turmoil, has generated a lot of uncertainties or things of that nature. So if we can, if, like, everybody has the same expectations of what a supervisor of technology is prior to hiring, hiring that individual. I don't think that was the case before. So here we have the opportunity for everyone to get on the same page for what is expected of supervisor of technology. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, except for, I don't know that any of us as. Yeah, except for, I don't know that any of us as, as a board has the district knowledge about the intricacies of what this district needs better than the superintendent and his team. I can't step in and say, you know, you should have this kind of a person for, on your team. Okay, we can talk about, and, and, and there should be facets of expertise that a person should have. But for us as a board to say it's got to be, it's got to have this, 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 or that's it. I, I just think that's heavy-handed.
I, I disagree a little bit with you on that though, but go ahead, Sharon.
Um, I was going to speak before Terry, what I was thinking in my head before Terry spoke, but I want to say that I completely agree with what Terry said. And there, there is a history attached with this particular, um, position which needs to be just like jettisoned. And the fact of the matter is the board has some input, but we have to trust that the people who are in these departments would know what to put in for a qualification for any particular position that we're looking for. Do we have some input? Yes. Do we have some questions and the answer is yes. But seriously, we, we don't have that background, so we can't. So we can say, this is what I prefer because we think, you know, historically or not historically, this is what we think would be a good thing to have. But we can't, we can't just assume that we are the only answer to the question because we've got really good staff who knows what to do for this. And we've had these, these job descriptions aren't new, there may have been some tweaking to them, but we've had these job descriptions, so this isn't a new thing we're talking about or looking at.
Okay, can I count it for a second before we have more? I, I want, this is in my goal, so I'm trying to comply with goals, number one. So that, that's a very baseline, that's, that's, that's like a minimum checkoff on that. So that's why it's forward in front of you. But I, to suggest, as Hillary said, that there isn't an added interest on my part to gather input from the board on this position would be wrong because of the past of this position.
Right, sure.
So I think there's an added sense of, we want good functionality in this department. I believe it can be very functional, I think it can do great things. And they need to, you know, operate in a, you know, in a box with some walls, but with some, a relative amount of freedom within that box, you know what I mean? So I think that that's important to me. Number two is if we're having a conver, I, I think we have to be, it was brought in front of you as a supervisor because that's the position that was vacated.
Right.
And that's, and, and it was tweaked around those levels of responsibility. I, if we, if we want to broaden this conversation and talk about the title of this person and pay, I think that that's, that's, that's potentially an important conversation, but also not, um, I don't know if that list is different or not different. I, I, that's kind of not, I'm not there, you know, I'm not prepared to answer that question yet. But I do, I get it, and I'm very compelled to listen to that and have that conversation. But I don't, I also don't want to derail the progress of, do I have a skill set here that we think is within my boundary to hire someone for this position? Or do we need to pause and think about what we want this person to do and how much they should make? I just want to be clear when we're done with this meeting, which direction we're going with it.
Right, right.
Okay?
Supervisor for technology and director for technology, what differences are they going to have in the job description? Directors can do this anyways.
I wonder the same thing, Adam.
So whatever we call it is what we call it.
Okay.
Really don't care. What I care about is that pay rate because we're going to get what we pay for.
What I care about is the responsibility and what they bring to the table. I, I, see, for me, a director is very different than a supervisor.
The better qualifications you'll get, it's just that's.
And if the pay is a little bit lower, then sometimes having a, a title that you feel like would help your resume in the future, so a director would be more preferable over supervisor.
Right.
But the other really important point that I wanted to make was that what Eric said is so true, and we all kind of talked about that, is that the people that hold these positions and are very good at them in the districts they serve come from all walks of life, all right? So, so what I guess I am really want to do is to give just a general job description with the, with the, with the parameters that we can all agree on. But here's the thing, you don't want to preclude somebody applying for it. And then, let's just say, you know, here's a general job description, I'm going to apply for it. You start to look at the resumes, Mike may say to Eric, oh my gosh, look at, we've got this one and this one. And this lady, in addition to being so good with technology, also has expertise and has managed state and federal programs for 14 years in this district. Well, if he looks at his team, I'm just using that as an example, maybe that would be a great combo. Maybe they would love to have the expertise of state and federal program expertise along with this. But you'd never know, if you make your job description so linear.
But I thought part of the process of this was to get further, or smaller amount of applications with higher quality.
Yes.
That was, that was a big chunk of this conversation, was to get a smaller number of applications with higher quality.
Okay, smaller number of applications and is that going to help us to have a smaller number of applications?
Higher quality, absolutely.
Higher quality, Mike.
But what might you be missing if you, if you narrow, if you make it so narrowly defined? But what might you be getting?
No, I get it, it can be played both ways.
Right, right.
One of the things, one of the things that you're missing is it says eight to 10 years. Somebody who's worked eight to 10 years in this field is making far more than 80,000 a year.
Let's not remember, we're talking education though, okay?
You bend down, you, you, you lower that number, you'll get people that are qualified. And maybe, maybe you put four to six years, you get qualifications, but maybe the salary won't, their salary expectations won't be as high as others.
I think you could get somebody very talented that has eight to 10 years of experience at that salary level.
I can tell you, working in this industry for a long time, to have no way.
They're going to look at you and say, that's my starting salary.
I don't have a third of that and I wouldn't even look at this.
Okay, Don and then Sharon.
We heard Eric earlier talk about different skill sets. You name it whatever you want, but you know, what, what does the district need? That's what I expect, and, and Terry referenced it. I expect you to bring back to us, what do we need? Now, you, you referenced that we have skilled staff, you know, I have concerns about educational technology. But then your, your familiarity, you, you, you're our quarterback, your staff, you said, has a good background in this and a good forward vision of it. I don't know, I, I mean, yeah, they're good people, I don't. But, so when you bring to us, I, I would expect that this is going to tell us, what do we need? What's a skill set? And that's been, you know, not, not the history of it, not looking for the history of it, I'm looking for the future. What do we need? What can we pay? Now, I, and I got to say, from, from, I really, the, the pay range, I think is worrisome to everybody. And are you going to keep that person? I, I, it just seems like if you're going to get somebody in, it's a very marketable thing. I don't think you, and, and, I mean, but there's always ways to work with that as far as, you know, you know, starting a set structure and do it, but, but at this pay range, but that's your job. You're going to tell us what do you need, what do we need, what, who, how are you going to classify the position? What are the standards and, or what are the educational, what are the experience? And if you think this is it, then, then I think we go back to what Terry said, then we, we support you. I, I worry about this, is this, but I expect you're going, you say, Don, this is what we need, this is what we can pay.
I think the list of responsibilities and the other pieces were brought forward as things that we think are good ideas. And I, I, I would say that in, I will, in general, make my, get on my soapbox and say that we've been, that most, many positions in this district and in education are severely underpaid compared to what they should be. Based on, if you look at our budget, I'll be quite frank, on the amount that it is, if you look at other industries with similar budgets, administrative salaries and technician salaries are, are much higher in private industry. However, this is, this is, this is not a unique problem to Lance Cruz. We don't have a way of generating significant more funds through a revenue stream that's under our control. And I am concerned, I have shared Adam's concerns with this. I share Don's concerns with this, and I am very torn about that because it also speaks to a situation where, in this environment, quite frankly, all of our salaries are public and everyone knows what everyone else is making. And it is not, it is, it is, um, not, uh, it's really tough to, when you start putting value judgments on positions because there are other positions that, that receive those same value judgments. And I, I'm very torn on that piece now. I, I'm good with the list of responsibilities, I'm recommending them to you. You know, we've made, have some notes on that. I think the bachelor's degree is a very important piece and other things like that. I think experience is important, five years versus eight, I don't know if that exact number is critical, you know, show me what you bring to the table, I think is more important at that end of it. But, I mean, how do you want to proceed on salary? Do you want to see what happens? Do you want to, do we want to wait? Because the budget is, we're getting there.
Yes.
We're soon.
Yeah.
And we could wait a couple more weeks on this to see if that flows through that conversation, I don't know.
Eric, Eric, as I listened to Eric.
Hold on, Sharon. Um, one of the things I was going to question, and those are all really extremely good points, but when's the last time in this district we took a look at what this particular position's salary is comparatively? How often do we review these salaries, I'm sorry, comparatively? And let's not forget, we have to factor in, we are a large district. We can't just go school district to school district. We can't say Richmond to Lance Cruz, there's a huge difference. And when we talk about other corporations that have budgets as big as ours, the things that education has that private industry doesn't is 600 teachers, 200, you know, how many bus drivers, how many other support and ancillary staff does the business of education have that a private industry with a similar budget may not have? Therefore, they can take some of those dollars that we're spending on other people that they don't have to increase our salaries. And I don't for a minute disagree that these numbers are like, who's going to want to do this, right? But we are in education and until, that's a hopeful until, the state gets their act together with their funding of education, these are always going to be issues we have to talk about. But, so my main question is, when's the last time we looked at this relative to comparables?
See, I've done this though, and that's really tough to do.
And this might be the answer.
Because there are some people that are assistant superintendents in charge of technology and they have PhDs in that.
Right, yeah.
Like someone in this room right here. And, and, and they make, they make more money than just about everyone in this room. So, so my point is, and there are people that are running very, very task-driven technology departments that are totally isolated from their curriculum departments that are making less money than this. This is probably the toughest position to counter compare, to compare to other districts.
Sorry, I'm going to cut you off really quick, though, Terry, jump in really quick because of what, something that everybody has said. So what do we need? You keep talking about all these other districts and what they have, what do we need?
I think.
Do we need somebody who's isolated? Do we need somebody who's?
No, we need some.
And Hillary?
I don't think they need the skills, I don't think they have to have all the skills we've talked about in the education end necessarily, but they have to be very good at coordinating with them and accepting co-responsibility with them and learning about that side of it.
And that's what, and that's what I was going to say to your point is, it sounded to me like Eric, when I said about the importance of having some education, it sounded like he has some people that may, may, may provide those services. And you want somebody that's a people person that can really collaborate with somebody and do that. So maybe in that, if that's the case, now we flip back to, then I'd have to share Adam's concern in that if you're going to get somebody that really doesn't have a lot of education experience and is more in the IT.
Right.
Then it's probably going to cost you a little bit more. But I can tell you, in this county, and that's what you, you, you may want to do, but in this county, for those that lead educational technology for their districts, and like you say, they're all different animals, probably range from about 60 to about maybe 90 or 100. It, it's not going to be past that because most superintendents of schools in this county and the smaller districts make about 100. There's no way that the director of technology is going to, or somewhere.
So you, you, you mentioned, right, talking about budget and all that kind of stuff. Let's reverse timeline this, we need somebody by mid-June, correct?
Well, I mean, we're.
When do we need somebody in this position?
Preferably.
It's preferred, it's not mission critical.
It's, the position's empty right now.
But we, we're proceeding with, with, we're not proceeding in a way that's a long-term solution right now, but we're proceeding in a way that we're, we are cross-training on skills so that we survive past that point, no matter what the title is.
If we're roughly eight weeks out, if we, we push this out another month, that's not enough time to interview, have somebody put a two weeks notice and get it. That's my point. Number two, are we interviewing internally as well as externally?
We would likely do both at the same time, yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we wouldn't do separately, Adam, we'd be all together.
Any other questions or comments from the board? No, ma'am.
So my question is.
Are you thoroughly confused? Because I somewhat.
Can we make some notations on this based on the earlier part of the conversation? And can we have a conversation and I'll loop, how do you want to be looped in if we have some more conversation over the next few days about salary and what we think we can get? I think the qualifications stand alone right now as far as.
Careful with open meetings act in regards to discussion.
But maybe Hillary, like you said earlier, maybe we could just give him a consensus check on a couple of things that probably everybody would agree on.
If I bring to you something next Monday and keep you abreast of changes from this point, is that something we want to try to get to next Monday?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's fine.
Okay.
So are you going to evaluate and then whether or not this is going to be a supervisor position or a director position?
Yes. I think so, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will do that, and I will make some other tweaks to the more minor language changes that we're, I mean, they're significant, but minor in, in what needs to be done for the, for the posting as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from the superintendent at this time?
No, thank you. Thanks for everybody for the good discussion.
Hit that right there.
Wait a minute, doesn't Eric have a timeframe too?
No.
That's all okay with me.
Curriculum instruction, student travel.
We have two student travel requests that were added, I'm sorry, after you all met for the agenda because they came through. One for High School and High School North, going to Toronto and Niagara Falls. And that one is coming up on late 22nd. And one for Lance Cruz North for Physics to Cedar Point on June 4th. And they both have staff listed and chaperones for the Toronto one. It is staff plus parents that are also.
Any board members have questions or concerns about student travel?
No, not on my board.
All right, thank you so much. Consent agenda, business and operations?
Thank you, um, the consent agenda is before you. Um, the one thing that I wanted to point out is under purchases, we had some discussion at the board meeting last month, um, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, um, there were some questions. So right now, there are three purchases listed, two of them were for the MISD, the software fee and the telecommunications service fee. And then we do have a bond item for Blue Water Boiler. This is a replacement of 36 tubes for the boiler at High School. Mr. Chopsky will be happy to answer any questions. But also with the, behind the purchases, are the questions on the technologies along with the answers? So I don't know if you've had a chance to go through them, if there's any additional questions on them that we can answer at the table. But I think everything was addressed.
Ford, is there any questions regarding the ISDP, ISD Sefler?
I have my questions answered, thank you.
David?
Sorry.
You good?
Always pull it up.
As soon as it will.
Okay.
Was that about IT?
Yeah, yeah.
Was that about IT?
Is that an IT issue?
Did we?
Who am I?
Did, do we have an actual conversation with them and saying why, why it doubled? And then give them some feedback and say, how did you allow that to happen?
Yes.
And?
The answer is it's been almost this expensive for a long time and they were using cash reserve, they were using their reserves to stabilize the increases. In fact, it's increased.
So it's been increasing?
It's been creeping, it's been budget creeping for a long period of time. And so therefore, they have been covering the overs and then finally, finally.
I asked that question so.
So did I.
No, they had a cabinet meeting where they were like, okay, I think this is the year where we just can't do this anymore.
I, the pressures.
How was that communicated to us, out of curiosity?
Through me.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so this actually, this actually came through the budget process last year. I mean, I hope, it may have been on the radar or under the radar for some of you. I, I mean, I've just, it did come through the budget process last year, they just invoiced us very, very late. So this was last spring they came to us. And I, and I, to refresh myself, I contact them again since the last meeting to get a little more detail on that. But basically, they have been continuously adding things to this list. So the IT instructional fee has, has changed. It's gotten more and more different services that they've, they've been providing and bidding out for us. And they haven't, they hadn't incrementally adjusted the fee, which is probably something they just. And they haven't, they hadn't incrementally adjusted the fee, which is probably something they just more honestly should have done, which is each year I've thought about that. But I'm sorry, I don't want to.
No, no.
That was another way they could handle it. Yeah, so that's, that's the reality of the situation, Adam.
Thank you.
And I also just attended the MISD's budget meeting, and knowing this had come up, I did ask. And that's exactly what they said, is that they could no longer continue to subsidize to the level that they had been. And so.
It begs, not that, but it begs the question of why they would do that to begin with, but neither here nor there.
Right.
What, you've been able?
Helped us out.
I do, I do think we're totally tied in though. I mean, we're totally tied into this. You know what I mean, I.
There's no other option.
Right, right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I'd say the service we get is, is, you, you know, take a hard look at it. I, I think you'll find it's exceptional service. I don't want to think that it is a matter that this is the only way to go.
Right.
They provide, the, the reason why they didn't pass on the costs, they looked at what's happening across. We, we, we just talked about it a minute ago, you know, what's happening to the local districts, and they know. So they, they did everything they can before they pass on additional costs to, to the LEAs in the county. I mean, they, they script. So, and, and so, and, and again, as, as far as it isn't a matter, it's, it's our only game. It's an exceptional group of people working very hard and the level of service we get. If you, you know, if there's anybody in the district that, that has a concern about it, please speak up. You know, whether it's staff or whatever. I, I don't know that there's any other county in the, in the state that provides a level of service.
However, I will, one last comment on that. I will say that it is quite common for ISDs to integrate these services and push them out to districts in a similar fashion. So this is, it's, although McCombe, I, I do agree that the service is good, it's not a unique model.
Yeah, you got Ocom, McCombe, Cat.
And actually, that's the purpose of the ISD, is to try to get the companies of scale and take the burden.
So anyway, so that was.
Anything else on the purchases?
Anything else on consent agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so the next item is custodial supplies contract renewal. If you recall, I had this ready to queue up and go. And then panic set in when I realized it wasn't a, a full amount for the, for the year, which I apologize for. So we went back, just a little bit background, in May of 2016, we awarded, we bid to, for district-wide custodial supplies to Nichols. It was a three-year bids with a one-year renewal. This is a one-year renewal. Keep in mind that what you see with the attached pages are the usage report that they have for all the things we've purchased through them. And right now, for the year, the calendar year of 2018, it adds up to $270,134. When I go to the board next week, I'll probably add a little more just as a cushion because we never know what quantity people, you know, are gonna purchase things for, so I want a little wiggle room. I mean, in case there's a, oh, God forbid, but a MRSA outbreak or a flu outbreak, we might have to get more chemicals and they could be more expensive, so. But Nichols does a really nice job for us. The fact that they're keeping the prices the same is excellent to us. And then next year, we will go out for another bid, so this time next year. So, any questions on that?
My only question is, is on the cover sheet, how it says future direction recommendation or recommended motion? Is that gonna change for the board?
Yes, we always change this for the committee as a whole. This is what we put down, and then we change it for the board meeting.
Awesome.
Okay. All right. The next thing that I have on here, the next agenda item is workers' comp. So just a little background on workers' comp. We are a self-insured employer. If you recall, last year about this time, it was either in May or June, we brought forward a recommendation for our third-party administrator. So while we are self-insured, we don't administer to the claims. We have, right now, Eagle Claims does that for us. And so what they do is, you know, they will do independent medical examinations. They get the reports from Concentra when somebody is hurt. They do all the due diligence. They might even do a private investigation if they feel that someone's dogging it. But they're the ones actually handling it, so it's kind of like an arm's length from us, which is a good thing because you wouldn't want us handling it with being our employees. So that is a five-year agreement. So we are self-insured up to, right now, we have a excess policy. So right now, we are self-insured up to $500,000 per a claim. And once we hit the $500,000 mark, if we hit the $500,000 mark, would probably be a better way of saying it, then that claim, anything over 500, would go to the excess insurance company, which right now is Midwest. And that's the one we have two bids on, two quotes on from right now. And then it goes from $500,000 to $5 million. And then, you know, anything over that, it would come back to the district. Typically, that's, you know, in most worker comp case, that doesn't happen. The largest workers' comp case that we had was back in 2013, or the one that's since I've been here. And that was, at the time, we had a $300,000 retention limit. And it would, the total was 396,000. So we came to the board and got that approved. I think it was the fall of 2013. That was an extraordinary claim for an individual, a custodian. Keep in mind that our exposure really, although we do have teachers get hurt and administrators, our exposures are going to be our food service people, our bus drivers, our custodians, our maintenance and our grounds. That's the key group on that. So before you, we have two quotes. One, they're both from Midwest. One of them has keeping the self-retention limit to $500,000. It's a two-year policy. And each year, it would be $38,809. The second quote is raising the retention limit to $550,000, and the price is $35,748. So we took in the risk, and we want to, you know, roll the die, and we want to keep the, I'm sorry, go up to 550, would save about 600, or 6,000 over a two-year period. Or if we want to be more conservative, we would keep the $500,000 retention. Now, our retention has gone up periodically, and that's kind of a, it's a market-driven decision. We did ask another company, I think it was Safety National to bid, but we're a little small for them. And that's the other thing that's unique for us because we are a smaller employer. Not by my standards, but by the worker comp standards, it's hard to get companies to bid on this. But, so, you know, we can either save 600, or I'm sorry, 6,000 over a two-year period, but take the risk for the additional 50, or we can stay with the $500,000 and, and go from there. Any discussion?
I think to save 3,000 a year against the potential of having to pay $50,000 out, I, I would just like to stay with what we've got, quite honestly.
I agree with you, Sharon.
So be conservative and keep it that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So then what I'll do for next week, we'll write that up for this, for the $500,000 recommendation would come through. Any other questions?
Just, you know, how, there's a lot of things we can do as districts through our ISD, and to the point you just made about we're smaller for the kind of work this particular company does. Do we have the, are we part of a consortium sort of thing, or this is the best we can get? Because we're part of like a boatload of districts that are all looking for the same thing, or do they all have to be with the same company for that to?
We're not with a consortium. We're out on our own because we're, we're just.
No, I realize we're self-insured. I didn't mean that. But like, is, is there such a thing? Like there's, is there such a thing that there's a boatload of districts trying to get together to get a better price on this sort of thing?
Well, MSL does have a workers' comp group, but.
We did them for a while, didn't we?
We had MSL for our general liability. We never went into the workers' comp with them. On my understanding is their pricing's a little bit higher. We do look at this. I have, because I am not an expert in workers' comp or insurance. We hire point consulting, and they always ask MSL for a bid on their workers' comp, on their TPA, and it typically doesn't come back favorable or doesn't come back at all.
I wouldn't think so. But are we, are we semi-unique in being self-insured on this one?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because like I say, I know there's the MSL pool and that self-insure. I don't know how many are in that for the workers' comp case, but no. You could sit here and pay premiums too, but our experience has been good. And one of the things Eagles Claims does, they come out and they do inspect our buildings. They do talk with the support services group. We can always have them come out and do training if we're seeing a lot of back injuries, maybe with bus drivers, for some reason, they would come out and do proper bending, or maybe the kitchen staff. So we always have that educational piece to keep our claims.
I'm, I'm happy with the stuff that we've got, and I like that we're self-insured, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources, our employment recommendations?
Yes, I passed the addendum out that will be added to the employment recs for next week. I think there was a question asked with Mr. Edoff regarding terminations that appeared. And those two terminations that I think you saw on what was posted for number one and three, those are folks that were on leave and did not respond to phone calls or certified letters. And general practices, when you're on leave and don't return, your plan is terminated. So it wasn't that they had done anything wrong, they just didn't return from leave. That answer, I don't even know who asked that question.
That was me. Yes, thank you.
I will say, Kelly, your department, Annette, is doing a fantastic job getting all these summer positions in here. I mean, this is like way in advance, so she's been kicking butt with that. So if you want to give her a pat on the back.
I'm certainly.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you have questions on other, other things with that?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay. Other matters, board treasurer's report.
So I'm looking at this third report that was generated. Thank you, Nikki. We're a quarter in, and we've got basically just over $15,000 left in compensation, conference, and travel. I know there's been some, some travel, particularly in the first quarter. But this technically puts us over budget, right? So just, just a thought to throw out there, I know we got $15,000 rest of the year, but this basically puts us 8,100 over just from a compensation perspective. Nothing left on dues and memberships, legal fees, I know we had to transfer that from there. Supplies, 273, and our contracted services, just over 7350. So one question that I had, does anybody have any questions related to anything I just said? Because I do have a matter.
No questions, but I'll have a comment when you're done.
Sure thing. So looking at some of the proposed budget from last year to what was, what the board approved. And I think, what did you, Michelle, you, you suggested 32,000, I believe it was, and it was, it came down to 27. Again, looking at this from quarter over quarter, obviously, this, this puts us in a situation to where if we had a board member who wanted to do some travel, you've already done some travel, particularly a few people, right, who've done some. Now you're coming out of pocket, right? So just out of curiosity, from my own perspective, why was that brought down from 32 to 27?
Well, the, the discussion that happened at that time was that the board did not want to take an increase when other departments were being, not getting an increase. Even being only $5,000, the board did not want to increase its budget at that time. So we stayed with the budget that we had previously from the previous year, and it was 27,000.
And in no way am I looking for additional compensation to people. What I'm worried about when I look at this is the travel and the conferences that are important, right?
Actually, these two have made some good points relative to that, that maybe you want to reiterate.
Sure.
So historically, before we came up with this budget last year, the board does have a budget, and it's, it's an enormous budget independent of these particular categories. And before we defined like, and I don't mean that to mean like it's, it's just these categories, there's so much more that goes into our board budget, it's enormous.
I had a conversation, I had a pretty in-depth conversation with Nikki.
Right, so you see that what you see here is not near what the board budget includes.
You're right.
So historically, what we used to have is just like you'd have the compensation, and that would be like for the meetings, for travel, for mileage, for whatever. And yes, we did discuss that, you know, the board wanted to, and we did show, we, we had cut our budget a couple of years to show some fiscal restraint and responsibility in relation to the rest of our employees, which is, in my opinion, the right thing to have done. The difference that we had though is that we, we never had just defined, like, like, for instance, like legal fees. When I first saw 1,000, we all know we're gonna go over $1,000, because even in, in a time where we had a timeframe where we had a great deal of legal fees that we knew were sort of hiccups in, in the totality of what we've been doing, but they were real nonetheless then. So to, to bring it down to this amount, we knew we were gonna go, there's no way that we're only gonna have $1,000 legal fees a year. But anyway, so it used to be that we never went over any particular budget because there were sufficient funds allocated for, excuse me, for that. So when we decided, when we started to define these, to be honest with you, the, the number that came up really wasn't a discussion, wasn't a discussion for the whole board at one time. It happened before, and then it came to the board, and it was like, this is what we're gonna do. So we've had many discussions. My main problem has always been that you're noticing, there's nothing in here for the cost of continuing education for the board, which is part of what is, what we should be doing and we're not. So while we're looking at some numbers, and some are gonna get close, some go over, some whatever, we don't have to be this, this tight that the board can't do the rest of what they should be doing as part of their job as a board member. And there are those.
That's my entire point.
Yeah.
And I think, and the only reason I bring this up, not to cut you off, is we got a budget meeting that's coming up. Just something to think about, again, Don wants to go to something that, that is going to, and that feedback and that educational experience and that professional help's gonna come back and help us from a board perspective.
Exactly.
You know, he's coming out of pocket. And I can't approve anything over the compensation that's been allocated.
Not this current budget, and that's why it's a good point to, actually, we were all gonna say, when we bring up this next budget workshop, this is something we all need to start, you know, talking about.
Because we should, as Ian, board member for an educational organization in my mind, we should aspire to improving our skills and expertise as board members. And of all the things that we spend money on, that should be like of the top priority.
This is not, I want to make this very clear, this is not to pay us more. This is to set aside dollars and cents for those opportunities. Right? You go to Washington, you come back, and you give us feedback that you didn't, and experience, you're done for the year.
Yeah, no, we're not talking about, hey, pay us more for each meeting, or do we more for whatever. No, not at all. That's, there's no reason to do that.
And again, you guys know this, and I think it was made clear probably year, year after year, year, I can't approve anything over, you know, a certain dollar amount.
No, this is the approved budget. This is what it is.
So, thank you. That's all I had on that.
I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, I feel very differently about this, me personally, but I'm only one of seven. But I feel that we are fortunate to get what we get. I feel that there are districts that get no compensation. There are districts that have no money for continuing education. There are districts that they, they don't have what we have. So I feel very fortunate for what we are allotted. I think it greatly surpasses being able to do personal development and education for new board members and existing board members. So I'm, I would not be in favor of increasing the budget in any way, shape, or form. I do think that, yes, and I'm somebody who's, who maxed out last year, and I will max out again this year. And if there's something that I want to go to after, yes, I'm going to pay out of budget, or out of my pocket. I, yes, because I feel that that is my responsibility in applying for this job and getting this job. It is pretty much a volunteer-based job. If I want to continue to excel and make myself better as a board member, the district provides me an opportunity to do that. If I choose to go above and beyond, that needs to be on me.
Certainly a discussion to have it.
Yeah, so that is my opinion in regards to it. But yes, as, and as we get closer to budget also, just to kind of transition to something different. In the past, we had done, two board members at a time would sit down with the business department and go over the budget line by line prior to our workshop. How does the board feel about doing that again?
Did it work well last year?
Yes.
We didn't do it last year. We did it there before.
Okay. If it worked well, let's keep it.
I just, I just have a comment about that because.
What happened last year?
First of all, last year, because we had turnover, we didn't have the budget workshop until June. Right now, I am short a person. It's gonna make it, I'm, we're struggling to get it done for the 11th at this point. I don't know. We're working on it, but.
So you're saying you don't have the staff to do this?
Let alone the hours to sit with us.
Well, hold on. There's two.
Foods.
Okay, there's two different ways of looking at this. The, we are, we lost an employee that was helping, was one of the main two people preparing the budget. And even if it was filled right now, that would be not a help to this particular task because they wouldn't know anything about our budget, right, or preparing it necessarily. The other issue though is, I, the, the two board meet, the two meetings were mostly a successful strategy, but require it to be done before the 11th, or those meetings aren't a waste of time. You know, they're just not a productive use of time. So I'm, this has been a dynamic situation, and I, I want to know, I want to have a good board, I want to have a good workshop, but I, and it'd be productive and not be tangential, but at the same time, we, this is a critical piece. I mean, this is a really important thing. So I, the 11th was put out there as the date. I know finding dates is really hard. I know it's impossible to do that. And I know there's a lot of constraints on people's calendars, but to do both of those things well, we would need a different date for a workshop potentially. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that that would be. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that that would be, that's an option that, I haven't even looked at my calendar to make that suggestion, but I'm just saying that.
It just occurred to me that what Hillary said, what, you know, about comparing what we have to other districts. I think if we also compare how we operate with other districts, we are way overboard in my opinion about, okay, all of the, 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 the reports that are provided and the checkbook register and all what we do, I would think with all what we've done, perhaps it, it might be helpful for Adam as a new board member, but I would think a stopgap approach where maybe we get some reports that are already, that we already get, you know, related to the budget, look them over and if there's a question or something. But to go have everybody sit there and go line by line, I think is really taking the time off. You know, if somebody really wants to do that, I think they should be able to do that. But I, for one, don't need a, somebody to go through the budget line by line.
Right, I have another option, I have just thought of something else, I just have not talked to anyone about. What if after that, what if we do something that's a hybrid of what we did before? And after that workshop, if people have, if we defer detailed questions from the workshop to keep it progressing along, keep good notes of what those are, then hold meetings with those people to answer the detailed questions. Cause this is well before voting still. This is all well before there's voting on the budget.
I like.
So there's no pressure after the eleventh, there's no immediate pressure after the eleventh to say, okay, now it's Monday, now we have to vote yes or no on this budget, you know what I mean? We, we push it up as high as we can in order to give flex time after that occurs. I know it's not the order we went in before, but that's another option. We could host those meetings based on how the workshop goes. And then, I mean, we know that's a deadline that we're tracking already right now. So based on how the workshop goes, and there's, there's two board members, four board members, six board members that have significant questions about one section of the budget, they go to these meetings and now they're ready to vote. I don't know.
Yeah.
And thank you for that. I think it's, personally, I would rather have the individual meetings first because I think what's gonna happen is on the eleventh is that everyone's just gonna ask their questions there.
Right, I know.
You know, so if there's any way we could move that back even a week at this point would be helpful, but.
Could we hybrid your hybrid?
Okay, so I'm not asking for. I'm already putting it out there to have more media sharing, even more would be even more.
Is that like a focus in a Kia? I'm like, I don't find it a hybrid.
I was just thinking we could do something like that, but, but be able to hit what you're looking for. So if we were all to sit down, maybe individually run over the things on our own, we go to the, the workshop. But we could shoot off, just like if we're doing checkmarks, shouldn't we have a question? Oh, I see something here, I don't understand this, or can we answer this question? We shoot something off and, and maybe you don't answer it right then, but you're already getting some, some questions ahead of time. Then we have the workshop and then we can say, hey, I, circle this one, I already sent a question to Rochelle on this one. So she already may have questions and she might already have an answer for it. And then it might be a little bit less time-consuming to do something like that too. Does that make any sense to anybody?
I think, no, I was just gonna say, I think, I think both Eric and that idea both are good, whatever, I don't have a preference.
How does it work for you guys?
I'm good. Well, my thing is, is what, how is the board best going to function in regards to discussion and voting on the budget? I think that it would be knowledgeable and comfortable with the process. And just from the two times that I have done it, I felt, and I think there are many that would agree, that it was more successful when we had those two-by-two meetings prior to the workshop.
Right.
So that's just kind of what I came into and my experiences were in regards to, to the budget. So, but of course, it's whatever the board, however the board chooses to proceed. So what are we thinking?
Let's, since we gave what we, we, either one of those would work. Eric, why don't you think about it, talk to Rochelle and just.
Well, I'm just concerned about dates.
Right, Rochelle, would you, what, out of the options that have been the hybrids and the hybrids and the hybrids that have been presented?
The focus of the Kia, Aerby.
Right, which, which would you feel, what would work best for you and what, what do you feel would be?
If we have, if we ha- if we're sticking to the eleventh, then I would say the questions ahead of time. And then the question is, when do you want it?
Okay.
If you need a week before the eleventh, that pushes it to the fourth, we're talking in two weeks, two and a half, three weeks, I mean.
And you won't have the budget done by then.
And we don't yet have the time for that.
Yeah, I mean, we're motoring.
We're motoring, but it's just, it's, you gotta remember with the operations piece, with that person being gone, it's just, it's just.
So it would be better for you to bump it out a week?
Yes.
And.
The eighteenth as opposed to the eleventh.
If we bumped it out a week, would you be able to then do two-by-two sessions? Or no?
The week before the eighteenth?
Yes.
If it was towards the end of the week, yes.
Before or the week of, what are you trying to say?
So if it was like the fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth?
Can I look at my calendar?
Absolutely.
Are you saying in lieu of our, the eleventh, what we have planned for?
Well, yeah, we, no, well, we are sort of, but be careful. So we already have the agenda planned, here's the big unveil, ready? Spring Board Workshop has one agenda item in its budget. The chair, the chair is Amy and we, so, so we already talked about that, that she felt comfortable that that was the only item. So we are, that's, there's no cancellation being proposed of that meeting.
Okay, alright.
It's, if we wanna do, Rochelle is suggesting if we wanna do a good job of having the two-by-twos, the meetings, then pushing it a week would be of sufficient.
I just said that, you may have recollected, but when we talked about that May eleventh, that it was the fortieth anniversary of the night I met my husband.
Right.
Well, so I think I could probably go if it's earlier, but if it's later or later in the day, I, I, I'm gonna be out of town and through the fifteenth, but I could probably do it if it was.
But that's, if we bumped it to the eighteenth, it would be better for you.
Oh, yeah.
If we moved that to the eighteenth.
I could be there fully.
I wish I got a check apparently.
But, but I don't know that Eric, you don't, you don't wanna move that, do you?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, you do?
No, I mean, I, no, it's whatever.
Eighteenth?
Does the eighteenth work?
No.
Do I?
I'll be on my ball trip.
Oh, that's right.
Well, there we go.
We don't have Mary.
So how about the twenty-fifth?
Memorial weekend.
Oh, it's Memorial Weekend, forget it.
So just, so we're gonna stick on the eleventh.
What time is it?
Hold up a minute, hold up a minute.
I mean, if you could do something like nine to eleven or something.
Adam, your, your golf thing is a day or a weekend?
It's a weekend.
It's a whole weekend? A week, so, oh, never mind.
Exactly.
We have it at what time on the eleventh?
I don't think we picked a time, we usually try and start like nine to noon or something.
We have a save the manatee race, which I think those two overachievers are doing.
Yeah, but you know what, if it comes down to save the manatee or the budget workshop and that's all your choices are, we're gonna have to make our choice.
Right.
Are we having manatee race?
That's quick.
Nine AM.
Cause I'll, there's three of us.
Twenty-two minute race here, you can get here by nine-thirty.
Don't derail me.
There's three of us, there's three of us that are going to participate in the manatee.
Three, you know what?
Yeah, three.
I'm not signed up.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
You can do the manatee.
I know.
It's better that we move it from the eleventh anyway, so why don't we try and do something different?
But the eighteenth, no, see, we're gonna have this problem.
What is your, what is your, the dates of your, your event?
When do you leave?
Seventeen through twenty-third.
Twenty-third, seventeen through the twenty-third.
And then Memorial Weekend's the next weekend.
I got it, yeah.
So what about the, don't we have the fourth over?
Yeah, but that makes it sooner, not earlier.
She can't do that.
Well, you can't get it done by then? Brain fart.
No, no, I don't really want that to happen.
Or we do an evening?
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, you know why, Adam, I'm not opposed to that, I mean, we, look, if we do the two-by-two meetings, then we should schedule, we should try to do a three-hour meeting. You know, we should try not to go for seventeen hours on this, you don't, you disagree with me?
No, okay, when?
Okay.
Rochelle, how does that work?
Cause I, I got prom.
May's a nightmare.
So, all right, can you, what day were we talking about, do an evening?
May sixteenth.
Have you leave the sixteenth?
Sixteenth is good.
Okay.
Seventeenth.
Yes, but we can be, that's, listen, really, priorities are, sorry Kelly.
By the way, my phone is completely inoperable, so if you want me.
So just say yes and they could have a break.
May sixteenth, well.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to sound kind of sending in any way, shape or form, it's just, it's Middle School North's spring concert. We're good. But, yeah. We're good, come on.
Oh, crap.
Can I make this recommendation?
Yes.
Last year we had it, I think, June fifth.
Down coaching.
Could we have it on, I don't know what the schedule looks like.
June fifth?
June eighth.
Okay, thank God, no, not June fifth.
Because the committee of the whole would be the seventeenth, the regular board meeting would be the twenty-fourth. That would give, we could do one-on-ones or two, two on, you know, or two-on-two. I feel like Noah's Ark right now. Uh, we could do that, the, uh, the fourth, fifth and sixth, maybe.
When could you release it to the board if we do it, if we have the workshop that day? When did you put it on the boards?
I would want it done Memorial Weekend cause I'm tentatively out of town.
No, but could we give it to them, give them more time on their own with it if we push it out?
If I gave it to them, the Friday before Memorial Day, that would give them a week.
Yeah.
Before, a good week before.
Hillary, what's going on?
The individual meetings.
I'm looking at June eighth, we're looking at June eighth.
Yeah.
What time?
Can we do as early as possible?
June eighth, what day of the week is it?
Saturday.
It's graduation night.
It's morning after graduation, yes.
We'll all be there.
I don't, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, hold up here, hold up.
Yeah, it's the morning after graduation.
Anyone amenable to doing it on Sunday the night then? Why?
I'm gone.
Sunday the night, Sunday.
Because if people are saying, I want it the day after graduation, it's.
Happy birthday. I'm out of town.
And happy, is that your birthday as well?
Yeah.
What about June first? Because graduation for the high school is on Thursday, the thirtieth.
I'll be out of town.
Oh, you'll be out of town.
But I come, I should be back here for the second.
Weekends are seen to be terrible, so how about just doing a weekday? I mean, we're here for board meetings till eleven o'clock sometimes anyway.
She said that. What about near June fifth?
So.
June fifth is Chris's graduation.
No, not June fifth.
But does the schedule look like, what is, is there anything happening on June fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
That says awards night.
Not available.
How about June sixth?
Let's go one at a time here.
Uh, June sixth is eighth grade awards.
College graduation.
Uh, June, June.
June fourth.
No, 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 June fourth is college graduation.
June, June fifth, you said is no good.
How about June third?
June third's no good.
So going into the following week, the tenth?
Tenth is open for me.
The only thing I worry about that, if we push it into then, we gotta have committee of the whole on the seventeenth.
Yes.
And if we have, I'm not saying we will, but if we have a major issue with the workshop and we need to do something different, you don't have a lot of, that's not enough time to make a change, need to do something different.
Correct.
That's too late then.
How about the seventh?
Or wait, we got graduation.
Graduation.
Oh, yeah. So we gotta get past the first weekend.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, let's just, let's put, let's try this.
We'll figure it out.
What about the eight? So Adam, you said early and it's the day after graduation, I'm game for anything. So what, what, what's too, what's too late or too early?
I'll throw a timeout there.
I know, I will too.
How long does this take, honestly?
If we do.
Two hours?
If we do the two meetings.
Ideally?
Well, ideally.
Everybody gasped. I, I love the AM.
Ideally, I'd schedule two and a half hours.
I'll do six.
No, no, no.
Eleven?
Adam, what time do you need to be done by?
I will have, I will have at least two games that day starting at eleven o'clock.
Oh, okay, so then you're saying nine to eleven.
So you need to be out by ten.
If it was nine to eleven, I can be late and have a assistant coach take over.
He said nine to eleven would work.
But ideally, thirty would be quicker.
You guys, come on, let's be real, it's budget, are we gonna do budget in two hours? Even if we all get the opportunity to have the questions, we always cut our noses off on these.
Well, can I just make a suggestion, there seems to be some discussion, we were just talking about the board budget. Maybe if that was done ahead of time, then when we're there on the eighth, we, we should be able to get it done in three hours if we need ahead of time.
Start at nine.
We were done in three hours.
He needs, but he needs to be done less than that, he needs to be out like by ten.
Yeah.
Ten forty-five-ish.
Okay, till when?
Because I'm just going over to South River.
Okay, how about till when, what's later in the day? Or does it go?
No, no.
Oh, eleven till one and then, then, yeah, three to five.
So starting at nine works.
Starting at nine does not work.
Is it only two hours?
No, it's kind of three.
If it's three, then that would mean.
But if it's supposed to be three and we cut it at two.
I can do eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty?
But I'm.
What is yours, Hillary?
Uh, okay, so if we do eight-thirty, I, I would have to be out the door by ten-thirty. I, I, I don't even know.
Let's look at after then.
Yeah, like, somebody said starting at three would work.
Let's look at after.
Yeah, starting at three would be amazing.
What does after look like, Dawn?
I can't.
We can't go in the evening?
Good, the three o'clock is when the game starts, is when the second game starts.
Well, not a two-way bet.
Not when you're head coaching.
How long do the games last, Adam?
Two hours.
Starts at three. Five, we do five?
Hey, guys, did we ever really honestly exhaust?
No, I'm exhausted, I'm seeing Matt.
Four, fifth or sixth during the day?
What about two hours?
What about four, fifth and sixth during the day? We have events.
Go through that one?
So the fifth is my son's graduation.
Okay, but fourth and sixth.
The sixth is.
Sixth during the day.
The fifth, there's a Higgins kindergarten ceremony, that's it.
Right, fourth is.
And then at night, there's, I mean, I don't.
But you need to be at that, Adam.
Nope, I'm just letting anybody know who may be either.
How about the sixth?
Oh, I can't do the fourth.
The sixth, Hillary?
I can do the sixth.
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 Okay.
All right, what time on the sixth?
Yeah, what time?
During the day. It's a Thursday, so Mary's gonna have to work until five. We can see if maybe if we do a two-thirty, like what, how we do a two-thirty here, if she can do it, if she can be able to do that.
I, I, okay, let's, let's have two options here, cause she might just say, no, I gotta work. So if she has to work, can we do, can we do, hey, can you do two-thirty or can you do five-thirty?
Right, right, does that work for everybody on the sixth?
All right, yeah, let's throw out the, the times we're looking for.
I can do it.
Can I look into everyone right now?
Ideally, two-thirty would be better, right?
That could work for you.
Two-thirty or five?
Two-thirty or five-thirty?
Right.
That's three hours, right?
Ideally, two-thirty would be nice.
Let me talk about this first.
If we can get two-thirty done, that'd be great, cause she has a good point.
Can I backtrack a little bit now for, to get to that? Because this is, board members like to have, I've had requests of having budget in hands well before the workshop.
Oh, well before, yes.
So, and we have meetings before that too.
Yes.
So, after that meeting, we would have approximately, you'd have almost a week and a half before the committee of the whole. I think that's okay, I mean, that's.
It's not a week and a half, isn't it committee of the whole on the seventeenth?
Yeah, well, it's a week and two days, it's a week and.
Four days.
So, well, whatever, and then they, and then the vote would be, the vote would be on June twenty-fourth.
Correct.
And we would aim to have it to you that Friday of Memorial Weekend, up on Edge Report.
The twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Quote-unquote, yes, tremendously, who does, thank you.
The twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that's two weeks before the sixth.
Of May, right? Yes.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth of May.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it's almost two weeks ahead of time you would receive it. And then meetings would take place between the twenty-third and the sixth. Is that correct, Rochelle?
I'm, I'm tentatively gone the twenty-seventh, so we'd have to do it the third, the fourth.
Twenty-seventh is, is actually Memorial Day.
Right.
Nobody will hear.
So the week of the third is when we would have our two by twos?
Yes.
If you want, if you wanted them.
We're talking June third, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'd be the third, the fourth and the fifth.
And you would have had it since the twenty-fourth.
Correct. To, so you have a whole week to review it and then your two by twos, I think.
And two by twos, depending how everyone wants to do it, I mean, I, we could probably just block out a day and knock it out of the park, depending on everyone's schedule.
Yeah, right, right.
It doesn't have to be three consecutive days.
It could be the best.
I actually encourage, if we're gonna do that, I encourage as many people to do it as can.
Yeah.
If we're not gonna do it, we're not gonna do it. But I mean, I'm saying, if, if you know some people are doing it, I suggest you opt into that if possible, just so you're aware of the conversation that everyone else is getting.
Yes, okay.
That's all it says.
Is that all the calendars?
Well, hold on.
We have a.
Finalized yet.
So, two thirty or five on the sixth.
That's could be the budget workshop, right?
Are we live with all that, is that good?
Good karma.
No longer, anyone doing, we're not doing it on the eleventh of May.
That kills the eleventh, replaces it with the sixth, and then meetings before that, and then budget to you before Labor Day.
It's one B. share report, toss it out.
Yeah. June sixth, either two thirty or five thirty.
I will call Mary and see.
Looking at everyone.
What?
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
And see what works for her.
So two thirty or five thirty, three hours.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, next is the two thousand nineteen end of year events.
I'm, I, I have a sent an email on this, I'm not gonna sit, I don't have time to sit here and go through this with everybody. I will fill mine out and send it to Nikki like I normally do and she can compile, but I, I can't sit here for this today.
Well, we did talk about it at the last board meeting at the table, I know you weren't at that meeting.
I wasn't here, I got less than an hour and a half notice today and I, first of all, I don't like doing that anyway, it's too hard.
But on the agenda, since the agenda was.
This year.
Excuse me, where is it on the agenda?
For end of, this kind of end of year activities for the next three months.
Yeah, but what do we, okay, we got it.
This is my printout from what I looked at last week.
Right, I don't think your agenda was in the end.
I think the idea was to have some representation there from somebody, so we were just gonna say who can go, who can't. And if there's some openings, hopefully you can make it.
And even if I did see it, I would still say, I don't wanna sit here for this whole thing for seven of us to go yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. Because the truth of the matter is, is we're all gonna do as much as we can and we always wanna make sure that we cover as much as we can. But I, I just don't see the point in us seven of us sitting here trying to figure out our dates. If you all wanna do it, that's fine, I.
Well, that's your problem.
Well, I'd ask, if possible, because there are so many events, it's great to coordinate and split them up where we can.
Right.
Like, for instance, I'm available during the day a lot more than other board members typically that work. I'd appreciate if we could, I, I like a column that I can put down who's attending and so, you know, and myself. That's typically how I, I, I mean, I, I go, you know, all the graduations, things like that, I typically just check in. But I, I like to kind of float to see what others' people can work, because people have families and stuff, I'm more flexible. So, I think it is important that we sit down and coordinate because you don't, it's, it's best if you don't have, you know, six board members show up at one thing and no board member show up at another.
I agree, I appreciate this activity, I just, today, I just, and I saw your email, I just can't today. But, I do plan, just like in other years, I am going to try to go to all, except, I will now be out of town the twentieth through the first of June, so I won't be going to anything in that timeframe.
Right, and I pretty much do the same thing Dawn does, I, I can go to almost all of them during the day and all that sort of things.
One other minor thing, if, if possibly the treasurer had some input, historically in the past, we've had some issues where board members would put in for compensation for attending on there, no, typically we say graduations are fun. I'm not quite sure how the, our policy is written right now, but it, to coordinate with the, to indicate on the sheet which items are to be compensated for, so when it comes down to it, when reviewing those, it's not a conflict or expectation. So, again, it means more work for Nikki typically, and, and in this case, and Adam, but I think it just answers the questions ahead of time.
Yes, so, in the past, the way that things have been done is that, yes, everyone sits at the board table and says, I can go to this, I can't go to that, and we, we coordinate, that's how it's been done the past two years. Linda did it before me and then I did it last year, and at that time, the treasurer said what was compensated and what was not compensated.
The board discussed that first though.
If we wanna change that, we can go ahead and change that and add the columns on the end and have everybody check what events they go to. Maybe that's something that we can do. You're correct in reimbursement, the way that our policy sits now though, all of these are reimbursable. All the events on this list are reimbursable events.
Even like choir?
No, no, we did the choir things and took those off last time, didn't we?
Nope, as far as the, no sporting events, sporting events are not included.
Even like the, the spring concerts and all that, I thought we took those off.
See, the year that Linda did it, she did, she did indicate, these were certain ones, these were only ones.
But we've changed our policies since then, and since we've changed the policies, because, under the new policy, right. Because we are all one seventh and we all get a max amount to spend, these are all covered under those, that policy.
When you reach your, your top of your.
When you reach your limit.
Eleven, you reach your limit.
Hillary, and my issue is just cause my iPhone is not working, I don't even have, I can't see some of my stuff. So I am gonna plan to go to all, except for the eleventh through the fifteen and the twenty through the first.
Well, it's difficult, cause there's, most, on some days, there's two things going on at the same time.
Right.
So who's going to one and who's going to the other. So just to say you're going to all, how do we know which one you're going to so somebody can go to the other one?
I got you.
So, I mean, maybe because we do have very different schedules and it is difficult, adding those columns for board members to check is not a bad idea. So we can all say this is what.
Maybe that is a good one, because even if, even if Dawn and I both check something, nobody else does, and then I can't go, at least I know that Dawn is going.
Right.
So, otherwise, it's, we don't know.
Right.
So.
What do you guys think about that?
It's, it sounds simple.
Yeah.